to Commission Brooks. Here. Commissioner McConnell. now. So we are all here. And this is Now there are a number of you here to four zero three zero. s do so and hand it the rezoning two later in the meeting. The first person I have Patti McPhee. your name, please correct me. You ' ll please start by introducing
I ' m Patty McPhee. I ' m out. um, I in and what we heard speak and on a six person daycare or children coming noise. a conversation in the fourteen v they eat? What was that? Also, most bus comes through. kids. So um, this opinion believe that the noise in our and as into them. I
Hi, I ' you like me to speak now or
it. Yeah.
here for public comment, right?
Um, my name is Denise Dalgren. I am here speaking um she is out of state. Good evening, members large group childcare home which mandates that such a is determined by this commission sits adjacent to Marsh Road. An unposted route where vehicles apartment complex further property. These fact-ating robust safety measure. M C L one two five out a six foot fence to the surrounding the rest of the perimeter. link fence is easily climb roads and other hazards. opaque barrier is cleared. action, see in it design requirement for appropriate fence Actually, I must highlight a significant yard fencing in accordance error, unquote. Michigan requirements are. s enforcement open to interpret objective safety standard for group childcare to determine under M C L
Your time is up. L. And if I mispron
Jim Brandel, and I ' m living at fifteen oh four finish the sentence that uh and set up fails to meet the and the proposal. your safety risk. operate as a large group own comments. I use, but more either intersection of Havre which often has fine There ' s also an house as well. Now that the Uh, there ' s in the neighborhood with cars also you ' ll hear from him on comment not to slam a pretty much done deal because they would they would the search by Corey, uh, the way it was presented.
anyone else has not s do so right
three thirty six Chantilly uh as a previous public commissioner and I walked away in the way that the approach and listening We have a great deal of trust dismay, what I interpret is out singling out specific it in how the commi uh narrative which was already ' s the most important thing I ' d like of of Meridian Township, you try to balance all uh here in Old England. owner operation. And that ' s where they put up, Kinkin ' you ' re going to have a problem when order to do their best to so in strong opposition. Thank you for your time, Mr.
This is the last
much. Some s not the case today because And I speak in a
name and address.
eighteen thirty four down and commission to deny the based on the failure under the Michigan zone property consistent A Corey in in a man The applicant has evidence and restraints regards the established commitment to rushed applicat twenty twenty four. eight days later, united timeline, raised us and whether sufficient L neighborhood and zone The township ' property violations However, this narrow as subdivision failure by the township on the community. Four four or four first. We ' seventh in the the results of this Now the property, that meaning be upholding here. This risk settlement. disregard local rule done. Okay. Well, thank you for neighborhoods.
period for this public for tonight ' s meeting. Thank you. Move the all in favor presented and then Commissioner Brooks, though. I move to for the minutes of
Thank you.
age. Yes. Um,
Yep, got that.
Yep, second one. minutes before we All in favor, please. And
One email that I passed ' s permit on down
This is from someone who
No.
Hope everybody would take a look at Then we are on to public hearing on rezoning. at
Okay. No. and Fidawal Holdings. hood from R double A uh Fidawal Holding north at four five one five. Um, subject to additional rezoning agreements worded by the applicant. The Michigan ' s statute. Uh, Land of does conform to the R Z applied for rezoning. Uh, that was a request to rezoning unit and they withdrew the applicat twenty twenty three designate family residential, um, our the area, it is R C family residential including um, in your in your packet. and more than two hundred and fifty traffic impact and now proposed rezoning does not that that ' s this approved, they have to apply become more involved. um, Number three, the current re lower designation, the in a those the following condition maximizing the number Second of all, they won ' t go any requests I think show a fact of a minimum required. And in fact, now that I single family, but regardless, That means that setback will never um, that they don ' t inter point. you what you ' ll see them make this will come back. You have questions of me, that ' s
And just to action to the township board at the township borders. Okay, okay.
sorry, I don ' t staff the board. have the discussion they
typically at this point. question for Brian. here and would like to speak address.
Mhm. Thank you. Uh, my
and Eastlake Drive Hazl
We are Fidawal Homes. township for forty four years. My three brothers and our kids go to Hazl developer, money as possible and time. So we ' re here as a community to bring that have evolved to accommodate concerns that we saw on Seneca, city. We had a writ and Eastlake Drive Hazl We are Fidwa Homes. ownership for forty four years. My three brothers and our kids go to Hazl developer, developer. money as possible and time. So we ' re here as a community to bring enters to design an that have evolved to accommodate concerns that we saw on Seneca, city. We had a rig is a big development with a partial uh have the same density build it back to a forty unit of working with the planning community still too dense. fits in well with the community. dev only of fourteen units project creates a great special townhome community. creates more of a residential a single primary is proximity to the is moving our development forward. In the present home could be built ten feet we have a fifty foot or a hundred foot setback, unit buildings from the previous. There are locations in almost fifty feet tall and two essential home. feet from the property line. Thirdly, demand need to either be in the business and we understand being into the township. In this analysis, five percent and the need within the market includes all eight to this data. Understand the need within bedroom rental, and I could find six currently available does not sup we have a real estate agent school year in the fall. rentals to the units priced below market rates. We longer. Most people, traffic and traffic through the data to understand traffic engineer. Someone understand how some even before we uh Okay. All right. Well,
introduce yourself and give us your
over, you know, for First of all, good evening. so civil engineering firm twenty seven in Duwitt, Ma Feta Wah homes. And specific try to put it in lay terminology. looked at this uh So we to be done and standards. So first and foremost, is we looked at or tee accounts, uh and those were taken So once we had P M peak hour, eight A M to nine A Um again, A M trips. mine. owe that to twenty twenty to our our we had to look at kind of like the uh at uh which was ten single thirty two multifamily at the trip generation six inbound and a total of So in the scheme of things, um just every ten minute, three minutes outbound or um it ' d be in a minutes outbound. amount of traffic a program to determine the a grade in school, bound is currently the the study level of service, which is during the A M and P M P on and then found was, uh, s with the except five way, that was and that would be um a very except the outbound was a C it really was only a zoned single fan. at this site proposed two seconds per vehicle to see if any turnlan return lanes were even closed. The analysis density to multi- as mentioned earlier, additional total trip, a total additional study location and that ' s kind of a you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Robert. family on the future land use master plan. Three minutes to Cornell It ' s a wonderful which helps balance One of the main goals of the master bring up the
them up there, one works there. Yeah, just keep scroll
help our community grow in s housing options and transitional housing. that we are all working towards. In the master plan, housing option. is our building north. And of the community. of what they want more of and read what it is the after listening to the township, over doubled our rear yard has an almost unnoticed rentals available in the Oak project to help our Thank you from the FEDO office.
of the applicant right now. will have signed up to provide Oh yeah, sure. I ' m sorry.
uh that uh projects currently in and we call it chamber and Hamilton and all of these all the Oak see, no, uh we have Comus, uh driven too much in January. Whereas home bill, Placing Road, and department at Meridian worked well to get thirty they get inspected Frank Christmas is a um in by family. And just want that the infill project the four acres, a single going to get very many vacant. Now that way. This is like the if project like this. If role. You that was a P U D project. take a careful because we
the
I threw the sound cut out and that ' s why uh planner short
date that. Um, unfortunately, no. broadcasting or
s got a text back checking
It is it is broadcast
question?
Just uh
that you mentioned
Uh, what was that? Great. Was that four point
was a HUD HUD HUD
then in turn, I mean, I know I ' m I ' m a pricing, but what for rental. starts at twenty two hundred two unit two bedroom, bedrooms might be reaching well is for one two
well as for one two those building for them. They landed a job. Uh want to see neighborhood. Do they in the community. that there are lot of times they will Haslow schools will
three bedrooms and range and maybe this is
and it ' s Uh, I think it
the Right.
Hut. I don ' t know if that was like um
So, um HUD does do they have to do an analysis and all that. And so thing and and reaching out to provide that data. It '
you, Commissioner
as I neglected that in my staff report. Paragraph two. hold a meeting with resident
a rezoning of the property
Brian. They had they had thought. Uh woods to trees. it ' s you know, you ' re gonna is on the situation. our plan was
Okay. go to the people here. Um, remarks. I will and your address. last time, but it is. questions during public comment where if you ask a question that we don ' t from you want to hear to back and forth dialogues on Leon and mispronounce your
s John Leone at four rich in the properties that fact, we all have families. international company you know, the the opening statement. here. So I hope those So, I um so they will um which I didn ' t get this in
You worked
Um, that is not a So, try to cut to the love to see a copy if there is such And of course, it would have to be something that ' s um the available to the boy, it must be. Excuse me. I epic analysis, which and I my knowledge, if me and also um data for anyone to make a time. And as far as the They had nothing new to say to of several meetings. Um, term, but if it ' s the is what people want. have to let you know that here. There tie into what may um process when the master there ' s a request that I revoke that check.
Thank you very much.
a text message from her. down the system and restart
but I ' d like to do that to me. your understanding and patience moment. Thirty five seven. Wait, I had to look here.
every minute and I did something
watching there. Oh okay.
I was yeah I
that push
when it gets down to
ning and it doesn ' t appear to
Yeah. Okay, so they there. Okay.
two months.
Yeah. who started every group all the smaller Yeah, you know, it
always been inspection
in our IT director backup record. But
you know, we ' re doing
But we ' re
I said something very small.
of patients. I love women.
Okay.
it ' s not I ' m gonna tell the meeting
to speak
Yeah. I ' m gonna tell the meeting to speak and Ms. Nurse, you give Christine Clark, four five zero one, FEDO present and Mr. FEDO was parcel is listed as which is not accurate. quote, the church other than third of the development to the north. Note the original parcel. The last I T half. So this I ' d also like to point out that is the full and complete. were concealed from the plan is multiple families is currently multifamily. surrounding areas have three development development areas vacant with some tree is not vacant with Number five states the took me less than five occupancy within flex units opening soon and township is stagnant. Well, in new townhomes, do you know, percentage of rental property concerns should be instead township residents who live in twenty three was one thousand will only unity. None of denied. This area
Now the four, five, three, eight, request twenty five thousand. Request by FEDO will hold it on Dobie Road from our I support density and I support as our especially parcel not lit family and the future land use a rezoning request of the of eight to nothing and I again denied by the planning commission meetings and one single family low debt or cut through traffic on Merrill Street Seneca mentioned in the traffic. We plan to install area. Note that the water issues, ex saw on the map is about are now purposely are already the was never zoned. goals in the master plan residential neighborhood. family units to have being the character of our ex to the minutes from the the twenty nineteen rezoning up with a new proposal family homes in that to neighborhoods.
Good evening. I missed letter from us. My up one issue now. The mention pond, but there's nothing concrete and roof. I fear that mean how close that so I'm just envisioning that the plan is very much. Nature.
Reside at forty five oh for twenty eight years. Ownership's master plan. Michigan Planning Enabling Act. All in void at also the acreage north Lutheran draw zone institutional available for the resi- acres but roughly easily fooled as to should be considered. All impacted parcels. Both sides of Dobie Road to send water to would are well known to engineer. Okay. Continuous flooding of the Nicholas, the food first resp- uh the facilities when adjust Elotree Apartments. There is no rec- creation of facilities. The applicant also available to lot. This is not drainage on Dobie Road. Rest um developer on this on this stretch of Dobie
Thank you very Major and that's the last in a form. Please do so.
Hello again. Thanks for the drive in Oakhamas. Marking today to uh look forward. Some of the inconsistency the parcel was already to B two uh north our driveway. That free vacant with some it was a wooded plot. trees that are thirty two inches point that's on the twenty years old. The beef the the packet. Professional is they three and it does have the one of the growth that we have nor aided in the second rental increasingly the plot plan itself. It uh I don't know if the traffic driveway is it going to be removed? Uh greater than the RD setback is even larger I guess the twenty second uh Jason of properties were who is still in RC after um not consistent. They don't know who said
Name is Deborah Major. There for twenty half was it as I have on errors in the that's important if there are so on page chin for this property was multifamily zoning so many times and I'm not the only denial. Minutes to you all in the packet so it word and those my husband stated is and we didn't come to and my concern is that packet that you're going all to a being area felt like um there implied that we would all what was wasn't actually a meeting. It was could be informed. Could see decision. If you're all angles give then you're not true you to be as informed as you to be able to see it um and thinking that thank you very much.
Public remarks. Thank you. I believe that next week so I'm going to close then we'll entertain from any planning commissioner. My planning commission members.
Both on this case concerns raised uh parcels uh parcels are being staff to clarify garden and parcel um I uh part requested to be changed back to um um what the orig- and how that aligns good. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. That in mind. This is an okay. Hold on. Patient or on the north part on was gonna go to their plot. So this the driveway that was split off and so that is true. The northern drive a a request with that is correct. Future land use map. On that. You recall that your land use map change they were using the was split from the that to draw the line after that fat. In twenty 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 technically two different master um vision had happened prior a new future two eight acres. Plan was updated. Then that I would assume the planning and I'm not prepared to say that with you. Sure. It is too, but I wanted that the development through. There's a fifty foot side setback driveway. Now prior application from driveway into their faith Lutheran confirmation that that's still eventually. First of all, to answer your question acres is being used for the misunderstanding in in my review of the our faith Lutheran parcel in nineteen thirty eight. On the pro- I I saw in the application about it being original but sometime before on one of those are trees or shrub. The edge is the continuous flooding of the and the uh the Spend a lot of time on that the people who live the west side of Dobie Road. Did that side happen. And I believe that there are process that an applicant carefully and ensure that currently. That's his poll. process that an applicant carefully and ensure that currently. That ' s his problem. to the north
Uh, the new apartment detention facility meant to. It area. So
uh
any development that happens on
vision.
That that ' d be great. That ' d be in session and
uh
It ' s kind of a tricky
We tend to talk about
in spots where a
and rather
thing on Greenland.
So, um, so this is it is walkable. be sort of lots of of public transportation ending of of what in
So those are
conflict conflict of interest.
Oh.
Let me see. all ' s don ' t say zone. dated multiple family
to sup
only residential request
and so do
quest.
right now side of that Right. This is the
Okay.
would be And that portion is the portion whole thing, but that ' s the portion of family.
Yes.
Yeah, that ' s that ' s um
future land use
something in there to
split happened
requested for resoning map
would be very difficult for us to parcel is a slightly different affirming that vision
a portion of the parcel
So
And and just implication of the lot increasing is of course in the part
on on what
not recommend that you split zone. Do not have those acreages
density is based on
same zoning design
Mhm.
some of master plan some of
accurate statement. Yes.
Okay. I mean, normally at hole of our way in thing we want from staff to Like I am us out there for just closer to being able to make a
but my um
was
to the single family rep
that the applicant has
umber and the
those
Not
the water management because
they ' re almost always because we don ' t have counter
have to take those traffic study limited data.
traffic study
a private drive.
Um, and
uh the tra
try to make any claims about how
re getting
Um,
to the fact that they ' re uh
I caused them when I pulled it Who ' s that guy on the bus? Uh, I drive a car and uh plan uh welcomed it and envisioned it. order of the application.
Okay.
over, sir.
one, but just
Acre to
concern right now. Work
eight minutes.
fifty minutes.
That ' s strong.
six months. Uh
Uh, I
the
All right. It ' s still me, Sam.
No, it ' s not.
Would you make that?
be over sixty.
Yeah. So.
Thanks. up.
You you don ' t no one is Yes, I feel like it ' s with a all what your role is a right to use their property. future land use map. questing. Um, I ' m also with landowners.
essentially gives you our this point, I I we were developing who changed the future multi- family development changed a stripe said, allow the potential in line with the future land to allow for this. So
I ' m sure that ' s
it ' s
two
s in the ordinance for I have to look that up specifics of if they ' re Looking at the trees here. I see houses and the
not required to, but if you ' d like to
Yes, of course. Uh least amount of trees possible. Um, back there that uh know, do tree
from uh to that uh and we would like But we ' re um uh
the uh
cycle planner
made at that time to put up a fence there ' s a buffer
Uh, I would just go on that. I would
Oh, contacts.
I think we just
So, do So, you know that this is not a they ' ll make a decision um after. approval. They this is a recog ratings on that. point, they know exactly the same as a body on that, especially you and for a final decision. and specific things like that. That ' s where the plans aren ' t approved with the
a question, I think, during public. conditions and and
into the resolution is
will carry with the pro
If anyone has an I I think we are. unfinished business. zero two five minutes.
Sure. Okay.
that traffic ' s Okay. Um, I
Good, good. Um, application for um, we jewelers, commercial. The twenty eighth, twenty resolution, uh eighteenth meeting expressing concern about and it ' the applicant. You future meeting. updated plan. Uh, ethic in traffic proposed closure of un- to create bypass lane. I ' ll just
it.
conversation within But there are two more signs. We ' specifically on the property doesn ' t go how possible that is to, but certainly some kind of seems reasonable issue and I sent this packet out. and I ' ll uh if I don ' t have specifics on as in some of this geom out during the site plan. This right here, and get in, that all the way around to is is in here now judged my time. You can answer questions.
didn ' t see right there.
last uh in our last discussion paper lane. line. Yeah, is um an a
Northbound. Yes.
room. Yes.
gress, also create a whole lot more
eight people that suddenly have
s road. And then of the site is that
that will follow this
exit um the only exit. What
ll be right turn only. Thank you.
on that point. Yes.
by almost a hundred. So, turn left.
man is looking at
That ' s the only concern I have at the contingent, you know, to
applicants attention. I don ' t want that being, I don ' t want that What do you mean I can ' t turn left? Now that was just a concern.
Does anyone else have any other
this
to support it. It ' in one day, entertain. to approve.
now, I ' m I
really impressed with impressed with the applicant cooperation came up or I I I look forward
though, I ' m not sure that I The resolution that medi project. I
Is it a hire
That should be up
I was and I went if somebody new commissioner Brooks.
is this a complete tear down
I
something. like some of that concerns that we ' re I just appreciate it. Correct.
That is correct.
at us. If you
Yes.
Okay. Approved. Now we zero three zero.
admitted to operate a group the quarter our code of residential zoning district. uh the Michigan Zoning Aid six of the standards is found in the hold a special a per session and public comment. um the original thing I will say that the state has comment on that. But approval of the fencing staff right opex
Can I stop you for just a But uh,
staff recommended to built the six foot opaque the state has looked s the is only one, and are specifically require state has a par the fencing as it appears contiguous or questions you have.
out the covenants and in decision making basically says this is a
t enforce homeowner restrictions, any of that. They contain would have to
Um, s um to to meet um on this uh land area which is a state crap, but I had
fences twenty years ago. Those are privacy fences.
um especially I in my opinion look I ' m I ' m I ' m wrestling with I don ' t know, some apartment comp um are somehow uh I I I don ' t um
I
since I used uh a and it visaged here, but the streets are issue, but it feels she meets our ordinance. the I don ' t
Thank you.
Okay.
other thoughts.
I I was gonna say I that this is and stem feels that it as it must be something else. questions we can put
position approving, especially at sixteen oh nine Downing
Michigan zoning enabling
the future land use map.
roll call vote. Commissioner Brooks? Yes. And the chair votes yes.
or in two weeks.
Thank much item
' s and appointments.
that time of year. I will send an official S planning commission first meeting in January, air are currently filled is stepping off. One of the members of the zoning board commission. At the current liaison do they need since there
Uh, I think it ' s Mr. Brooks. No, you have
Oh, that ' s No, no, you don ' t. now on. Oh, is it or I mean, serving, I ' d be willing to continue
someone else. Not in any
higher by chair for reappointment and then
I can. Uh,
slate. If you s I think you can handle
have to share. Thank you.
secretary and then voted with
a nomination in a second.
call vote. Mhm.
I I think we we should back by appointing him as
master plan, we are
The master plan Yeah.
hell I get I get a comm. but it ' s it '
Is there a second to roll call vote on Commissioner McCutcheon vote also on our Z
Yes. I think you can appoint
only. Thank you. But we have so think were unfilled.
any other statutory
or informal and at least else for which we some point you and I should
that.
So thank you.
believe tonight. I apologize.
You didn ' t even notice.
get reappointed.
said yes. And if you think we
I know if you if I if about, but I think you ' re okay.
done in excellent. Uh, it board update?
apologize. I don ' t ownership has later this month.
update is that the town
Oh, that is pretty
term um
off or
Okay.
last meeting the township board
just the headlines environmental sustainability and improve citizen out township website. also appointed two new strong uh a a teacher and a student that the food issues around those
Thank you.
you.
Thank you for um
have you a full report in the next
And now we are on to the at this time. it to staff if you want to come up and speak now. Good. Thank you. And just if you
forty five forty three Senate um this board with a fetal project. where where does not a very dangerous thing next to uh multi- and saying that if they had had I think other uh want to do this up You ' ve done this for somebody else. this time it ' s not a very industrial. that is going I beg you. ' s up. This uh what was it? Just meets.
Sure. Why not?
Please give us your name and address.
Sorry, I I
So um
Can you give us your name and
Right. So master plan was developed
which who petitioned the town looking hearing. It was published routinely read the it from the surrounding I don ' t think you can sue at four approved and in the map. of that property. So you can ' t sue it it ' s it ' s and traffic start there. There ' s nothing there. I I think the traffic would in routinely cut through the shake Grand No street light. ice that cut through traffic. Only one. and so rough, you So you ' re reduced to one uh much work. also increase the has a building just place in a garage. So it ' s the township with complaints to sleep in the middle of the night. um the light pollution. the drainage map that here at the bottom of No. I have no
Missionary two. make them aware of the issues. know, if you just give us your name
in the line
of seventy Zonicker Drive. facts. What I heard you say Mister Fedewa. That means or forty. And now just automatically feasible. land use for this so many times are still saying and it down. Um, application was denied. That is not why. It ' s the why. And so and still make it right for it or everything. The drain commission will at detention knows where it ' s going to be. And that Where will it be? By that time, it will be past. and our you guys will go home just ask you to think business, but then anyone in favor of
Thank you. Anyone else? Ed before you.
Um, between uh
I um
even building on that portion give it back to the said that there ' s three store building that we have included in the
I um that one side that goes all the way back. even building on that portion t give it back to the said that there ' s three store building that we have included in the past. the lighting from the town have not heard them. It is a requirement by on site, no We will follow all of the
Thank you. Thank you. fill out a form before you take Okay, thank Full public remark. comments? Does anybody have any
Yeah, but don ' t laugh at me.
Okay. Um, we
I think so.
ready? Um, Internet, eight fifty seven.